To the Monday. Take two. Good evening and welcome to the Monday, February 10th Town Council meeting for the town of Orano. Roll call shows that we have with us today Counsel Matt Powers, Counselor Dan Demerit, Counselor Sarah Marks, Counselor Andrea Hardison, and Counselor Rob Larway. We do not expect to be joined this evening by Counselor Baker or Counselor Kenny. First item of business is an executive session. The council anticipates it will be about 20 minutes. The agenda did have the expectation at the start time of our open session would be 5:20 this evening. So apologize to anyone tuning in or in attendance for the very start of this, but we'll be back shortly. Could I, I would entertain a motion pursuant to 36 MRSA Section 841 to consider a request for a poverty tax abatement based on poverty and disability, number 2025-001, to move into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor? That's unanimous, five to zero of those present in voting. I don't need to do a roll call if someone's not here, right?
Right?
Yep. Okay, it is. 5:25 PM and we are back in from executive session. The Orno Town Council is February, Monday, February 10th meeting. And we're going to move into executive session and we're going to consider, I take up a motion to put Order 25. We do this in the active session or in the active portion of the meeting?
2527.
Do you want to do it in the active part of the meeting or do you want to do it now? All right, let's do it now. As, as included in the agenda, I take a motion to put Order 2527 before us in order to consider a request for property tax abatement based on poverty and or disability, number 202025-001.
So moved. Second.
And second. Under discussion, we talked about for the years 23, 24. Do we need to offer an amendment? Can I get an amendment to change the order for 23 and 24?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Okay. Any discussion? Anyone want to be heard on this one? I guess that's, we do that with everything, so we might do this with. Okay. Hearing no discussion, we'll take a motion first on the amendment. All those in favor of amending Order 2527 to make it clear it's for the 23, 24 tax year, please say aye. Aye. And there are no opposed, that was unanimous. Now, the amended order is before us. All those in favor of Order 2527 as amended to include the 23, 24 tax year? Well, in favor, with a show of hands? That's unanimous. Thank you. And thank you for waiting with us while we did the executive session. Agenda review, we have, this is the part of our agenda where we post the items that the council has referred to the committees. Are there any questions about items under agenda review? Are there any items that a council would like to add today to today's agenda? That's adding something to today's agenda that wasn't posted and requires a unanimous vote of the council? Does anyone have anything that they'd like to add or discuss? Okay. Moving on to item four, approval of minutes of January 27th, 2025. Yeah. Can I get a motion approval of the minutes?
Moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor? Andrea, you going to vote against it or what? Okay, yeah. All right, that's unanimous. Item five is public comments as a point in the Orno Town Council meetings. Remember, the public, either here in person or over Zoom are invited to join us and address the council and the community on anything that is not on our agenda. We do provide time during the agenda items for discussion from the public as well. Welcome. Could you introduce yourself and make sure your microphone is on?
Push the button.
Can everyone hear me now? Okay. Some of you guys might know me. My name's Darren Martone. I am a senior at the University of Maine. I would just like to talk to you guys about a recent development in the State House. Our representative, one of our representative, Senator Joe Baldacci of Penobscot, recently submitted, sponsored a bill to make a intercity passenger corridor from Portland to Orano. I think that the council should study if this is a good thing. I mean, I believe it's a good thing for our community, considering that we have a revolving population that comes from all around the state and all around New England that come here to either vacation in the summer or students come here in the fall that could use intercity passenger rail as opposed to driving. Yes, this is a relatively new bill. It got referred to the transportation committee, I believe, the sixth. And yeah, it's LD487, if you guys would like to know anything about that. Thank you.
I'm sorry, my microphone wasn't on. We're moving on to, we're moving on to item number six, opioid settlement fund. we're moving on to item number six opioid settlement funds under present stations and discussion items.
Good evening, Dan Merrill, Chief of Police. So I've been working on this, something I've been working on sporadically for the last few years, and it's something I'd like to make a recommendation to council on to refer to a committee. I don't know if Clint or I really decided which committee it should go to. Did we settle on one? Clint, I don't. A committee to be determined for how we should, how we would like to as a town utilize this opioid settlement funds that we're receiving from the state. So every year we will get funds as part of a settlement that was reached as part of what would be essentially like a class action lawsuit that that the state did. And all untold, the town of Orno will receive just shy of a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars in funds through this program. Granted, that will take until twenty thirty-eight. So we're going to receive funds. We started receiving funds in twenty twenty-two and that will go through until twenty thirty-eight. At which point, like I said, it's it's just shy of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars we'll get. So I've been working with and in contact with people. There's a program out of South Portland. That Moss Support Center that I put in the memo. They've sent me some policy templates that they have, and they've been working with me a little bit about ways that we can use these funds. The link that I sent out is the state's website through the Attorney General's offices to what the allowable uses are and the rules and the guidelines and stuff like that. So that's basically where I'll be using those as the guiding documents, but I just need direction because I don't think it's enough money to where we could fund an employee. It's, you know, ten thousand dollars here, fifteen thousand dollars here, twelve thousand dollars here. So I think that we just need to think creatively about how we want to put this these funds to use either in Orno or in the Greater Bangor area where there's services that some of our citizens might use. So I just want to further that discussion a little more.
Counselor Marks.
Thanks so much for bringing this to our attention. Where is the link you're referring to? I maybe I missed it.
Oh, you know what? This is the, yeah, I have it. There's a newer memo that I sent that had the link. I can get it to you, though.
Oh, that would be great. Because that was my question was just a little bit more information about the parameters that of how it can be spent.
This was, yeah. Yeah, no, sorry. It was a, this was a memo I had done before that and Clint actually did the exact same thing you did. He's like, hey, can I get the link so they can have that? So I sent that and I think I must have missed it. So my mistake, but we'll get it to you guys.
Totally fine. That would be great. And I really appreciate that you're bringing this to us and want council input and community input on how to move forward with it. I think my only question I have is just I've been sort of looking back at the kneecap report and realizing that our top goal was to be like efficient in how we moved things through council to move issues and work forward through council and to completion in a timely and efficient fashion. And to shift to a model where each issue starts at a council meeting and is then referred to committee if needed as opposed to a model where everything is expected to go through committee. So that's no comment on your suggestion. It's my comment to us as a council about how we feel like we're doing on that. I'm starting to feel like the list for committees is getting quite long. Committees only meet once a month. Council meets twice a month. So my preference might be that staff came back with a little more information to us, maybe the parameters and any ideas that have currently been suggested of how to use the money and that we have some kind of short council discussion about it to see if there's clear direction from council already or if it needs to go to committee. I guess I'm not fully convinced yet that it needs to go there and couldn't be resolved at the council level. That's just me.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'll just say I really appreciate you bringing this to us, you know, I think trying to figure out how best to put this money to good use to support people who are suffering from the the exact problem that this money has come from. I think I appreciate your thinking about this and your conscientiousness about how we might best want to use these as a town. But I am also in agreement with Sarah. I think once we have a little bit more information, we could decide whether or not this goes to committee, which committee it goes to, or whether or not we can figure out a best direction to go together.
I tend to agree. I think that if if staff has a has a recommendation and can bring it to us and and bring us if we can't agree and think we need more time, we'll run it to a committee. If not, I think we'll quickly and expediently approve staff's recommendation and move forward from there. Counselor Marks had another comment?
I just had one other, which maybe this has already been done too, but I was wondering when I read the memo. His staff already consulted with the Orno Health Association, who does seem to have a good pulse on health initiatives in Orno in general and might have good ideas of what to do also. So it's just a thought.
The we can. The biggest is, and I'm going to blank on the acronym right now, but there is a Bangor-based group that's been talking about the use of opioid funds.
Was it Penobscot County Cares?
Yeah, so we've been kind. I've been invited to a couple of their meetings. They're talking about the crisis of homelessness and opioid addictions and they are coming up with some suggestions as well. So we've kind of been monitoring them to see if they had a use as well. So yeah, why don't we? We'll put those together and bring it back for an action item with the council. Probably the March agenda, I'm guessing, but we'll talk about it in the agenda. So, yep.
Appreciate it. We haven't spent any of the money we've received thus far.
No, it's so up until, as I understand it, up until like the middle part, middle to end of twenty twenty-four. They just started to really build this center to help municipalities because they realized that people that aren't getting, you know, five hundred thousand dollars. It's about creating something that's sustainable for me. Like I said, this is a program that it could outlast me in twenty thirty-eight. So I want to try and create something that the town has a model in place to where whoever it is, the manager, they can just say, this is an allowable fund, almost like the mini grant program or any other type of grant funding. You just say, yes, this falls within the guidelines. It's consistent with what the funding is and we can just do it. So that's where I'd like to get to, but I think we're in the early stages. We're a little ahead of the power curve, which isn't bad, but it's going to be a process. Let's put it that way.
Excellent. All right.
That worked.
So sometime in March.
Great. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thanks, Dan. Next up on the agenda, we wanted to take some time to provide feedback on the neighborhood noise regulations that the Community Development Committee review has been reviewing and Counselor Powers is chair of that committee?
Yes, and I am going to turn it back over to Dan and he is going to give us an update on 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 where we are because he's worked very hard on a draft on the Neighborhood Ordinance Review that we have had at these three meetings on.
Thank you. Would you mind? Thanks for the pass back. Would you mind seeing if staff or members of the audience want to take a look at it? This is a draft document. Our goal for tonight was to provide kind of an overview of the findings that we've achieved over the course of our three meetings with staff and this draft document after we view the talk about the findings tonight, we'll go to staff for input and suggestions, anything we may have missed or anything we need to anything that we need to improve upon and then we'll come back. Our goal as a committee is to come back with a finalized draft as a report as part of the published agenda for the February twenty-fourth Town Council meeting in two weeks. The high-level overview and with great appreciation, particularly to Chief Merrill and Mitch Stone and town manager Deschand for helping us was we've heard from the community for an ongoing basis that there's inconsistency between our expectations in our communities for behavior and what we're experiencing in in our residential neighborhoods, particularly it's particularly acute in the fall at the start of the academic year when we welcome thousands of new community members to Orno and we found, you know, in our review of the ordinance, Orno has comprehensive ordinances and a lot of work has been done by prior councils and staff on this and and community members. And we're fortunate to be served by highly professional police officers trained to use judgment and care when responding responding sometimes in the middle of the night with calls about news, noise and nuisances. We took a look at in terms of the data, we took a look at the trends in rental units, registered rental units in Orno. We have eighteen hundred and forty-six units that include over thirty-eight hundred bedrooms. Many of these flip every year. So we thought about as a committee, we thought about what we could bring in terms of recommendations and we think there's an opportunity for us to do first focus on better engagement, recognizing that we don't do enough to welcome and celebrate our new community members when they arrive in Orno in a formal way. And, you know, people get people get frustrated because it's it. It's every year. It's a new cycle every year where we we welcome thousands of new new residents to our community, many of them of, you know, college age. And they just, it's not enough time to build relationships in a casual way before they flip. So before they flip and new tenants come in the next year. So for us, we think about is there a way that we as a community that cares a great deal about belonging and building relationships? Can we formalize a process on an annual basis? Whereby we build these purposely have events and education where we engage with our new residents, make build relationships and help set clear expectations about how we behave in our residential neighborhoods. Now you see as you review this, this, the data in terms of our background and process. We were asked to look at, you know, how the ordinance are being used, reports, complaints and staff assessments. Awareness, community awareness and satisfaction, problems and barriers with enforcement and needs for Orno or ordinance amendments. The report will have links to the the ordinances that we looked at, our meetings, and we got some excellent data from Chief Merrill about the number of complaints in Orno. These complaints are inclusive of all complaints. So this is, you know, one of these complaints could be, it's not. But one of these complaints could be the fact that my generator is too loud. Those, but there are also those two in the morning calls that end up end up kind of monopolizing a neighborhood's listserv or Facebook page for the next seventy-two hours, seven days. When an event, you know, some kind of party or some kind of event is is underway. It also includes pedestrian, you know, people walking through a neighborhood making noise. So this is the trends. The trends are coming down since COVID. We had we talked about the disorderly activities and that's when in our ordinance, the the items are deemed to be a disorderly activity and what that means. And there's a whole process for a property being declared a nuisance. A declaration of a public nuisance and a disorderly property and a response remediation process through that. We felt like we had a long conversation with Chief Merrill. We felt like and and this this committee is Counsel Powers, Counsel Hardison and myself. We felt like police do a really good job of using judgment and care when they arrive at a at a at a scene. And we very much value and want that in our community. We're not, we don't see a path forward where Orno would would arrive in a very confrontational way with our with our resident, our long-term residents, our student residents. We don't want that for our community and we think it takes an extra, you know, it it takes a lot of professionalism and community focus to pull off the type of policing or that that we would expect as community leaders when when our police department responds. And we're really grateful for that work and that focus. So we looked at the, you know, the activity and we also looked at the trends in rental property registrations. And anecdotally, people say things have gotten better and in terms of, you know, you hear, I don't know, I I haven't lived in Orno long enough to know if these things are true, but you hear of how the interactions in communities, it was louder and wild, wild west, I think, was thrown. I've heard that term before. Wild, wild Webster. Is that the way they put it? So but through, and this is a, this is a really good lesson for us in terms of the work we're doing with our comprehensive plan through thoughtful planning and economic development policies and ordinances over time, changes happen. And what's happening now is more and more of our more and more of our M D R, medium density residential zones. More of that housing is moving to kind of the big three housing where reclaiming more kind of single-family homes that are no longer registered registered as rentals and you're seeing that trend over time. But we still have a number of non-conforming use properties that are, you know, quote, air quote grandfathered into their use and not a conforming use with the with the neighbors, with the rest of the neighborhood. So our thinking with that in mind and understanding kind of how the trends are in place, you know, we looked at we developed some conclusions. We believe that there's, you know, low awareness and resistance to reporting from what we'll, what we call permanent residents, people that live in the communities year in and year out, people that have a mortgage and or have, you know, blessedly paid off their mortgage. And we we're, we see that we don't think residents are seeing or experiencing the proactive community policing work that we heard about that's going on in the neighborhoods. We are, you know, Officer Leskey, you know, literally will visit people and and talk about, you know, how to behave, what's going on, follow up. And but residents don't see that. Residents are not involved and who aren't getting the visit aren't seeing it. And we don't have a formal process for updating neighborhoods on on how how the town's responding to problem behaviors. And we don't publish the list of rental property owners or designated local agents with contact information. And that's something that we that's interesting, you know, if we have better awareness about who's in charge of the property where there potentially there's a problem or an opportunity, let's call it an opportunity for improvement. You know, some people make instead of calling the police or the code enforcement, I think some neighbors would like to call the landlord or the agent directly and say, geez, this is going on. Hey, can I take your bottles and cans back to the redemption? I'll bring them, you know, I I heard a personal story about a neighbor doing that for someone who had a surplus of bottles and cans in the backyard. In terms of new residents, we concluded our findings where we just do not see we don't have a formal welcome event for humane students in the fall. I don't in my experience, I mean, people may differ. Maybe, you know, we put flags up and things like that. And maybe there are smaller things, but we don't have something where kind of a community-wide event or or recognition that, you know, thousands of new people are coming to our town. And as a soon-to-be black bear dad, I mean, I think that's something that I want to celebrate no matter what, but so we don't, and we don't have a formal process with land that I understand, and we need to confirm this with staff, where landlords are required to educate tenants about neighborhood expectations. We don't have, you know, the the university spends a lot of time and resources with their residential staff, resident assistant staff educating new residence hall students, what it is, you know, what the quiet hours are, how, you know, how you're supposed to live, you know. And and we don't have anything similar to that in terms of our town and and communities and neighborhoods. You hear a lot of really good stories about people doing one-on-one engagement with neighbors, you know, people exchanging texts, cell phones, numbers, people bringing brownies or cookies over and saying, hey, I'm your neighbor. I live here. If you have a problem, please, you know, please be in touch. And some people, that comes naturally to some residents and for others, it it's not nearly as natural and it's a, it's a, it's a burden to, you know, they feel like it's a, you know, people are burdened by it and they don't, they don't do it. And that's understandable. And we think that there's an opportunity for us to help make some of those connections in the neighborhoods on and ongoing. I mean, it's going to take resources, it's going to take commitment, but it's something we could do on a on an ongoing basis. So our our recommendations and we'll finalize this and ask for staff input into this document before it gets published with the agenda for the second February meeting two weeks from now. But you know, we don't have an immediate, we don't think we got to dive into all the ordinances. Perhaps there's a couple of things we could review around rental registration and making contact information publicly available on Orno's website or maybe making available to property butters. We don't have, we also think that there could be an opportunity for us to ask our you know, property owning partners and who own commercial rental properties, you know, what can we do to better inform tenants about what it, what it means to be living in a residential neighborhood in the town of Orno with with clear behavior expect expectations and either something you amend to a lease, something you post, you post inside the building. You know, live life, laugh, live, live, love, laugh, you know, those, you know, some kind of signage inside the kitchen that says, you know, you live in, this is you live in a residential community and these are the expectations, quiet hours are eleven. Yeah, you know, it doesn't have to, we don't have to print the whole ordinance out, Rob, but I bet, I bet we could put a couple of things out to kind of connect people to what the expectations are. We are, it's a goal of the council to reconfigure, restart Orno Festival Days. Members of the Community Development Committee and I, you know, double-checked with each other today, we're willing to help volunteer with that effort broadly. But also think about how that can be part of a welcome initiative in our in our neighborhoods with our with our new community members. And then we we want to talk about with staff about how to prioritize and resource community policing and public engagement in our twenty-six budget process. And work that we could do to increase visibility in our residential neighborhoods, particularly where there's a lot of non-conforming housing. You know, you don't have to come down some streets. There's, there's no non-conforming housing. But, you know, those neighborhoods where we have that that mix. But, you know, in those neighborhoods where we have that, that mix, and we're going to have a lot of new residents, how do we, how do we increase visibility and kind of community policing visibility in such a way that residents see it, you know, ongoing residents see it? And then what do we, what can we do around Main Day in the spring, this coming spring, and in the first several weeks of the fall semester, as we just sort of lean into, lean into the Welcome to Orono work? That's our report. It'll be finalized, we'll ask Clint Mitch and Chief Merrill for any feedback they have for the committee before we finalize it, and we'll bring it in for the, as a final document for next week, next two weeks from now. Anybody have any questions about that? Yep, and we'll look to follow up with the, the residents who, you know, came to our meetings, talked with, talked with us. But I think we did a lot of good work, interesting work. I learned a lot. If that's the measure of whether it was good work or not, I, I know I learned a lot. And I'm excited about what we could do in a way that's consistent with our, the care and judgment the police department already uses when it, when it works with throughout our neighborhoods. So, good. Matt, you want me to kick it back to you so you can kick it back to me again, or can we just move on?
Thank you, Dan, for kicking it back to me, and I will now kick it back to you, Dan.
Thank you. Now we'll open up public hearings. And we do A, B, and C, Clint, is that how we're doing it? Okay. So we'll open, I'll open up public hearing A to consider amendments to the Town of Orono Ordinances, Chapter Two Administration. Is there a staff presentation on this? Or?
I can summarize, the memos been attached. The Chapter Two Administration is the one chapter where a portion of Chapter 28 was being moved to. It's in the area of equal opportunity employer where we're adding in the language for harassment and how to make a complaint and how it's handled if it involves the council and/or manager and the other opportunities the community has. So that's the change there for Chapter Two.
Yep. Does anyone want to be heard on public hearing A? All set? Yep. That will close public hearing A and move on to public hearing B, to consider amendments to the Town of Orono Ordinances, Chapter 28 Personnel.
So there's two attachments here for this in Chapter 28. This is the, and again, in the memo summarizes as well, but what we're doing is moving back to a model where we are going to have ordinances, not going to have as many of our personnel policies in ordinance. We're going to have an ordinance that says we adopt a personnel policy handbook. It's done by the council, it's done with the same process as an ordinance with hearings on an annual basis, and moves it in ways so that we have a very communicable and, I would say, user-friendly document. So that will severely reduce Chapter 28. The only other things we did talk is we did add in there some language to make sure that Chapter 28 maintained that it will be done. Again, the process to adopt it annually, it will be maintained online. And then there's one amendment that came up through the council procedures that'd be posted on the website, made available to any member of the public, staff, and upon request, as well as, where's that line? Oh, and changing it to the Personnel Policy Handbook was the last phraseology we wanted to make sure was used in there so we're consistent across the board. So again, two parts, you'll see two attachments, one's an amendment that we just came up recently at the very, very end, and then the other one is the full document itself, completely redlined without that one amendment. Oh yeah, and that's why I opened up the wrong one, that's why I couldn't find that other section.
Okay. Would anybody like to be heard on public hearing B? Council Marks?
Thanks, Clint. I just wanted to point out to fellow councilors anyway that that amendment was worked on by Clint and I after the last meeting to reflect council's discussion. So it was changed, so you might want to see that. And Clint, just a flag that on the first version of Chapter 28, oh no, you're fine, it's there, got it, we're good.
Okay.
And that's, yeah, just to point out what's there, the, the Second Amendment, there's a lot of procedures that we have. This is a personnel policy book, procedures, rules, trainings, those are things that the staff does on a regular basis, those are not included, and that's the language that's in the amendment to make sure it's clear with everybody that there will still be training activities that we have to do and we have processes around them, whether it's elections, lockout, tagout, those aren't in a handbook because they're unique to each department.
Okay. If there's no public comment, we'll close public hearing B and open public hearing C to consider the establishment of the Orono Personnel Policy Handbook. Town Manager Deschand.
That's the handbook, so that's taking everything else you've seen, you could cross-reference if you want to go back and forth between them, but it's, this is a clean version of what we've done, for the staff has had a chance to look at it, there are some minor changes, just because we had to make it legal and, and current with, it's been a long time since an update of some of our ordinances. But again, no, what I would consider substantive changes on how we go about business or practices with staff and management, just getting it in one book.
Is there any, thank you, Clint, any public comment on public hearing B, C? Okay. Hearing done, we'll close the public hearings. In terms of process, I would say that the Orono, the Or- Ordinance Review Committee had two separate, at least two separate meetings to discuss these, these changes, and those meetings and discussions where staff and, and our human resource consultant briefed us on, on the intent are all on the YouTube, are on our YouTube channel for the Town of Orono. So if anyone has any questions and wants to go back and see, see that discussion, that's where they, that's where they live. And we will bring these forward as part of, the plan would be to bring these forward for our two weeks from now, or are we going to wait, going to wait 30 days?
Uh, March 10th.
Okay. We're going to give everybody a whole month to kind of marinate on these and come back to us with any questions or concerns, and then council will consider, consider them and including the amendment that Council Marks has worked on based on our, our last discussion. Yep. All right, we'll move on to item eight, acknowledgement by council members. We'll start with the Matt Powers end of the table, and I'll go last. Council Powers?
Sure, I have a, a, an embarrassment of riches for this, so I'm going to take up Jacobs too, but the first thing, unsanctioned. First thing I want to say is, I want to acknowledge the, the geezers in sneakers, which I attend periodically, and they walk at 9:20 in the morning and then have coffee, and they are a wonderful resource. And as part of the walk and talk this morning, one of the members from Webster Park told me about an intervention by the community policing in Webster Park and how it made such a big difference to them. And the, the students came over and apologized and, and talked to them, and so I just want to acknowledge the police department and their wonderful work on that, and that goes along with what we're doing in the community development. And finally, I just want to say, go Orono Track Team, the, the boys won regionals and of indoor track, and the girls came in second, so way to go.
Excellent. Council Marks?
Um, yeah, thanks. I wanted to acknowledge our Public Works Department under the leadership, well, in this particular project of Megan Hess. I've, I live in the Webster neighborhood, and there have been lots of comments when I've been out walking about how much folks are appreciating the invasive species being cleaned up along the river there. I know Megan has said that's ongoing, but it's already a huge improvement from where we were, so huge shout out to the Public Works Department. And also just the Orono Thrift Store, I was there again recently, and I'm so appreciative of having that resource in our town. And the Orono Health Association runs that with all funds going to the Health Association, so very appreciative of that.
Council Hardeston?
I just want to congratulate Camden Brown. Camden is a senior at Orono High School, is a member of the track team, and recently was awarded the Ann Norton Sportsmanship Award. And I just want to thank Camden for being such a great representative of our students and congratulate.
Council Larway?
Yeah, I have a few. Public Works, I mentioned in our last meeting or the meeting before that, just how much work they're doing for snow removal. And I'm going to bring this up again later in the agenda, but I think in this year's budget, I think we sort of lost track of this commitment we as a council made to revisit the, the question of, you know, how is Public Works snow operating, the snow removal operating with the positions that we removed during the budget of last year or the year before? I forget exactly, it all sort of starts to blend, blend together a little bit, but I think, you know, it's probably, it's part of making a good faith effort to show that we support staff, hearing a little bit about what the experience has been so far this winter, because last winter we didn't get, I think, a full sense of what exactly the impact was. Other acknowledgements would also be the University Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Committee here in town. There, I think there have been some things circulating in some more politically polarized places online of selected clips of the, the committee, and I just want to say that I stand in full support of the work of that committee. And I also want to acknowledge, I guess, that people are feeling uncertain right now in a lot of ways. I know, one of the things that I like about this council is that we are not operating in partisan silos, we're not, we're able to work together and largely not have to deal with many of the tensions that exist at the federal level. But there are things that affect people in this town happening at the federal level that I feel like it feels wrong not to say out loud that people are concerned, and I think some of these concerns are really legitimate. The Penobscot Community Health Center all last week was wondering whether or not it was going to be dealing with drastic staffing cuts as a result of a reckless and sudden cut in funding across the country. And it was only reinstated at the last minute on Friday because a court stayed the executive order that was causing that. I know this is uncomfortable, but there, there are people in town who have family in Gaza, and there is a repeated proposal to ethnically cleanse their nation. I can't imagine the pain that people feel in our community as a result of that. We're a college town, and there are students as a result of another order that if, students who come here from abroad are supposed to be able to expect the protections of the First Amendment, and there's an order right now that if they are found protesting certain things like the proposed ethnic cleansing of Gaza, that they could be investigated and deported. I, I think that there's so much more I could talk about, and I don't really want to take up too much of people's time here. There is, you know, the, the closure this weekend of the Consumer Protection Agency, there's rollbacks of what little was being done to deal with climate change, and many of these issues existed under Democratic and Republican presidents, but I, so I don't mean for this to be a partisan statement. But I just want to say, I hope that we can continue to care for each other and see past some of these divisions and understand that these concerns are not just the result of manipulated or biased media, I think. And I'm not trying to stoke worry or fear, I'm stating and acknowledging that these worries exist and that these are things that we all have to figure out how to contend with together. So this doesn't necessarily represent, represent the positions of the rest of the council, but I felt called to say some of that, so thank you.
Thank you, Council Larway. I would, for acknowledgements, I'd like to acknowledge the, the good work at the, at the Collins Center to bring venue, you know, to bring different performances to our community, cultural performances. I happen to, I happen to have the, my partner is on the, the board of the Collins Center, and so we happen to get a lot of opportunities to go, to go to events, and, and we saw the Yamahodo Drummers a couple of weeks ago, and this past weekend it was Next Broadway Musical. And a shout out, this is a, a backhand way to get a compliment out and a mention of the updates to the website and the, and the work that we do to maintain our website. One of the performers who clearly Googled Orono, you know, the, the pronunciation of Orono was spot on every time, the pronunciation of Bangor, you know how sometimes it slips into the Bangor, as opposed, was off a little bit and got corrected during the course of the show, but the, the performer, the emcee of the Next Broadway Musical event had a lot of good things to say about all the information she learned about Orono from our website. So I was, wanted to throw a shout out for that as a, as a good resource for people. And I could have done without the, the joke saying, you know, look at them at the height of my career performing in Orono, Maine on a Friday night, but we were happy they were here, and it was a good, it was a fun performance, so. And the compliments to the Collins Center for all that they do to, to bring those opportunities here to, here to us in our community. All right, closes out acknowledgements by council members, we'll move to the consent agenda. Any member of the public or any councillor can pull off a member of the consent agenda, an item from the consent agenda, otherwise the items are voted on and without discussion and as a block. So I would, unless, no one has any concerns, I would raise a question before we move to the consent agenda, but without pulling anything off the consent agenda. Clint, usually we, a lot of times we'll have the public hearing right before the items, and I apologize if I've missed this piece. We've, we, did we have the public hearings on these, or no, we changed the, we changed the, yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry, you want to?
These are renewal applications for the council, so we're on our new procedures that are finally adopted from the kneecap process.
Thank you.
So now a renewal application, unless there's complaints, do not go to a public hearing process. It's a time saver as well as a financial saver for the community to do them this way.
Unless I ask that question every time, but I won't. So, so walk everybody through it, we updated our ordinance to be faster and more efficient, and this was our first time experiencing that, so. Council Marks?
Yeah, Clint, maybe could we just add on the orders in the future, order approving a renewal Victor Lur's license? That way it'll be clear to all of us and the community, because I imagine we'll have some that will be not renewals mixed in, and it might help to keep things clear. Thanks.
And to Pat Estes, who's home tonight, not having to come give us a public hearing briefing. Enjoy your Monday, Pat. All right, can I get a motion to move the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor? Unanimous, and we want action items. Could I get a motion to put Order 2530 on the floor, an order accepting town staff's recommendation to launch a pilot cardboard recycling program located, located in the town of Orono landfill?
So moved.
Seconded.
Yep. Staff have anything for us on this other than the memo? Yep. Is there anybody who would like to be heard on this agenda item? Give me thumbs down, thumbs up, thumbs up means nobody, I can move on, okay? All right, I wanted to thank staff for bringing this. We had some, some questions and prior discussions about how to manage recycling, particularly at the, at the larger, we call them the big three developments, and providing access to recycling. This sounds like a great pilot initiative, and look forward to seeing how the town is able to, we can communicate that back to the people that reach out to us, but I look forward to seeing how the town is able to create awareness about this and getting a report back at some point about if people valued it and people used it. And this is open to anybody, right? So, okay. All right, all those in, if there's no more discussion or questions, all those in favor of Order 2530? Okay, that's unanimous. Next up, I'll take a motion to put Order 2531, order assigning the Community Development Committee to discuss community involvement in Route 2 corridor safety metrics.
So moved.
Moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded by members of the committee. Do we have anything from staff on this, Clint?
The, the, the forms attached from the last meeting, part of the conversation, so again, it's referring it out for more of a conversation at the committee level.
Okay, any discussion from council members?
I would just say this was brought up by a community, one particular community member in council, but this has been reiterated by many, many people in the community, to me, that about pub, you know, safety, especially in the winter as it gets dark and we can't see crosswalks and whatnot, and so we're going to take a look at this and see, see what solutions we can do, or at least start working on, on some sort of framework as we go forward.
Great. Any other comments from members of the council? And I did ask, I think, if anybody wanted to be heard on this? All set? Yep. Okay, all those in favor in Order 2531? Yep. That's unanimous. Order 2532, take a motion for, put the order on the table, it's an order assigning the nominations, evaluations, and council policies committee to review, to review of the guidelines for issuing council proclamations and resolutions.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion from staff or councillors? Yeah, Council Marks?
I can just say that I asked for this to be referred to the committee just because after we adopted the kneecap recommendations and have made changes to our and have made changes to our council meeting versus committee meeting structures. And we no longer have every councillor serving on every committee. We are discovering these, this policy is an example of discovering policies where there's still kind of a relic at the end of this policy of referring it in a way that made sense when every councillor was on every committee, but may not make sense now. So that's why I wanted it looked at as sort of a continuation of implementing the kneecap recommendations on committee and council structure.
Good. All right, that's the overview. Is there anyone in the public who wants to be heard on this item? Any further council discussion? Good, all those in favor of Order 2532? It's unanimous. Can I get a motion for Order 2533 on the table? An order disbanding the council environmental committee and changing the name of the staff environmental committee to the environmental committee.
So moved. Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Here we have, can we get a overview of this one?
Sarah, did you want to start as well? It's a kneecap recommendation as well that came forward on this? Yeah, you?
I can just start by saying it started from a kneecap recommendation. We realized there were still committees sort of on the books that council had not disbanded that have actually stopped meeting. At least the council one for sure has stopped meeting. And so it was a recommendation of that committee. And then our town manager reached out to Megan Hess, who wrote us a memo. And so actually I think I'm probably going to make a motion to amend this order, but I'll let Clint talk next and then we'll go from there.
Yeah, and as Megan presented in the memo, what's going on with that committee is, the council committee is somewhat dissolved as in there was no participation or membership. And it turned into a little bit more of what I would consider an advisory group that staff created just to work and get information as needed. No formal policymaking, anything that was provided there that required action was brought to the council as a whole. So I think that's what we're recommending, that just like any other staff member sometimes would put together a sounding board of community members on issues that are relevant. She likes that ability. It could allow her to change it depending on neighborhood area or issue. But again, everything would ultimately come back to the council for action. So there's no real need for a committee, is a recommendation coming from staff.
Okay. Any members of the public wish to be heard on this item? Yep, any additional council discussion? Yep.
I just want to say that I think it's great that we have a paid staff person who does this work now because I think we need to credit the previous council for getting these committees together originally to, you know, do the work to really prioritize environmental work in our town. And out of that came the recommendation to hire Megan Hess's position. And I'm just really grateful. I think these committees served a great purpose and have done great work. But I would like us to disband them so they're not on the record when they're not meeting. And I'm fully in support of Megan's ask that we disband them both and that she doesn't need a committee. She just needs her own advisors who she consults when she needs to. I appreciated she made it clear that, you know, this isn't a group that has regular meetings. It's none of those things. These are people that she reaches out to when she needs consultation. And I especially appreciated that she brought up that anyone is welcome to be added to this group. So I just wanted that read into the record that if you're someone in town with, you know, concerns about environmental issues, any kind of expertise in any of those areas, just reach out to Megan Hess and say, you know, I'd like to put my name also there so you know I'm available. I really appreciated the clarity of her memo. Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of Order 2533? Oh, okay.
So.
Hold on.
Can I propose an amendment? Because the current order doesn't reflect what Megan is asking for. It reflects, I believe, the kneecap recommendations, does it not? Can you read it out one more time?
The order?
Yeah.
The order disbanding the council environmental committee and changing the name of the staff environmental committee to the environmental committee.
So Megan is suggesting that we disband both the council environmental committee and the staff environmental committee, which it's somewhat unclear if it existed. But her, her statement is, my recommendation would be to disband both the council environmental committee and the staff environmental committee and allow the environmental advisory group to continue to operate as is. So I would like to amend the order to say that we would be disbanding the council environmental committee and the staff environmental committee and making no alteration to the environmental advisory group that Megan Hess has.
I will move or second that, whatever the action needs to be.
So just for clarity, if it's okay if I read it back to people? Would be, the amendment would change it to order disbanding the council environmental committee and the staff environmental committee while retaining the environmental advisory group.
I don't think you need the last part. We do advisory groups from time to time on a variety of subjects. It's not something, it's a staff function, so I don't think you need to.
Are you amending an amendment or are you just clarifying what I?
I just wanted to clarify, I don't think that's what Sarah said.
I think that's perfect without that last part. So take that last part off, thanks Clint.
All right, so it's an order, thank you for the clarification. Feel free to amend, you know, offer amendments whenever you want. Order disbanding the council environmental committee and the staff environmental committee. Hard stop, period. Is that okay? Manny, got that? Yep. Any other, so we need to, any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment? We got a motion from Sarah and then Rob. Okay. So we have a motion to amend, a second. So now we're going to vote on the motion, on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment? And that passes unanimously. Any final discussion on the underlying, the amended order? It does seem like an extra step, maybe council efficiency could, once we agree unanimously, we don't have to come back. But the underlying question still remains, could we get a vote to approve the amended order of 2533? All those in favor? Yep. That is approved unanimously, thank you. All right. Order 2534, I guess before calling for it, I would, I think I'd ask for a motion to table because the proponent is not here today to just paint the discussion. But I'm open to, if people don't feel like we need to table it, to allow, allow for that. It's not on the, it's not on the floor yet, so I guess, why don't we put it on the floor and then we can, sorry. Order 2534, can we get a motion to put Order 2534 on the table? Assigning the ordinance review committee to review the town of Orno ordinances, chapter 30, solid waste.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Clint, do you have something you want to present on this or this was Leo's?
Councillor Kenny and I had a chance to discuss this, came up the last meeting. He thought that it deserved further attention in the council agenda item. We discussed the options and how the ordinance review committee was going to begin reviewing ordinances. And since this was an amendment to them, did he want it to flow naturally through their process to review or recommend that it come up sooner? He felt it should come up sooner, so he, instead of go, you should do a form. That's the new procedure we put in place. So he put together that form that would refer this to them if the council supports making this a sooner priority than the natural flow. They have not met. And they're going to be talking about this a little bit later, but they haven't had a chance to meet yet to talk about what order they're taking things in. But there.
Okay.
I would be in favor of what you proposed in waiting until we have Leo back to tell us, make his case for the priority of this.
Yep. Okay, so is that a motion to table?
Yes.
Yeah. Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Well, any, anyone from the public want to be heard on this? Sorry. All right. Any discussion among council on the tabling motion? I don't think you can discuss a tabling motion now that I thought about it. Yep. So if anyone wants to, okay, we're not going to discuss the tabling motion. All those in favor of tabling Order 2534? And if anyone wants to move, we reprimand the council chair for, you know, concern, not operating the meeting great. We make good progress, but it doesn't always, you know, it's not always perfect. All right, now we've done, we made it through all our action items and we'll let Councillor Kenny know that we've tabled his, his items so he could be here to talk with us about it. Council committee reports, we've got first community development committee.
You've already heard an update about the community development committee's work on the neighborhood ordinances. And we will be following that up with looking at, of course, the route to safety and also continued work at looking at the fall festival here in Orno.
Anything on SAMP, on the special access management plan discussions? Councillor, what's that?
Go ahead.
We asked him to come back with a bit more of information regarding the number of properties that are available and willing to develop and look into the state plan.
Yep, and potentially a budget request. Is that what this means Mitch? Yep. So potentially a budget request. Appreciate staff's willingness to work with the economic, Orno Economic Development Corporation. And particularly it's, I don't know, is Jeff Gordon the new chair of that panel? Is that?
I'm going to get it wrong, it's Andy, right? No, the new, it's currently Shep's.
Yeah.
Yeah, Shep, everybody, they're bringing in.
All right.
Day picking, sorry.
And both, I'm sorry, both of our representatives to that committee aren't with us today. But I do very much appreciate the, the work that, and the organizational work that Jeff Gordon has done on this project. And I think it's going to be an interesting opportunity to reach out to Orno landowners and with their interest in either participating in the program or just any questions they may have as landowners looking to bring their, you know, developed property into, into housing, attainable housing in Orno. Okay, anything else?
That's it for me.
Yep, thank you. Finance and operations committee, Jacob's not here, do we have anything from staff or other members? We don't have to, no, we can move on. Pass. Nominations, evaluations and council policies committee, Council Mark.
Yes, an update that we meet again this Thursday morning at 9:00 AM. It is our intention to finalize our report back for the council at that point in time. So regarding, we were charged to come up with a process and recommendations around 360 degree performance surveys for the town council ourselves and for the town manager. So council should look to be getting that report very shortly after Thursday. If I'm really lucky, I might be able to turn it right around on Friday. But, so at least next week, so that you'll have it a full week before the next meeting.
Okay. And anything on ordinance review committee, Rob?
We're looking forward to hearing from staff about potential next steps for what ordinances we want to review and in what order, how to go about this process. But we are dealing with some scheduling conflicts with some members, especially with legislative session starting, lots of other stuff happening. So we have to find a new meeting time. So we will be figuring that out soon, I'm sure.
Yep. Good. I do not have any council chair updates. Town manager report? Oh, I do have, I will say that we're going to take advantage of an opportunity with the Orno Observer. The deadline is the 13th. Unless anyone suggests otherwise, I think an update from the council related to our, our goals, our municipal year goals and the town manager's work plan and bringing some visibility to that work, I think would be a good and appropriate thing to update people on at this, at this point. And maybe, yeah, for me to write on behalf of the council. Okay. All right, February 13th.
That's gay, Thursday. So one and three, I'm going to kind of combine because I think it's relevant. GA update, there's some legislation being proposed at the state that has some impacts on how we handle the general assistance cases. But again, I think what this revolves more into is the Main Service Center Coalition is an organization we're a member of in addition to the Main Municipal Association. But the Main Service Center Coalition is a group of communities that are funded by the Service Center towns, Orno, Bangor, Auburn-Louisville, South Portland, Portland, et cetera. And they, they are reviewing the laws that are currently in front of them. So a lot of times I think is, one of my goals is tracking legislation for the council. We're using a lot of alternate resources. It would be too much, it's a full-time job to keep track of everything that's currently proposed in front of the legislature. If there was anything urgent, I'd let you know as a manager, I'd bring it forward. Right now, the GA is one, there's also a FOIA law change that we're monitoring that would require us to respond completely within 30 days. It's a functional impossibility for our staffing, for some of the FOIA requests. We usually do it quicker, but FOIA requests can be extremely intricate and extremely detailed. And sometimes it can take, you know, over a week just to figure out how much work it's going to take and what the cost is. So there's some conversations happening at the state level to see why this is being proposed or what's the motivation. But I could keep you posted. If there's other legislations you're curious about, one of the ones that was unique that we became aware of through planning, another community, another legislature not in Orno area proposed a bill that the university system should offer all land to their host community before they are able to sell it, write a first refusal, if you will. We didn't know about it, we've reached out, I'm getting some more information. Doesn't seem to be, it's very non-Orno in nature in the sense that the University of Maine as the flagship in our town have had no issues with anything on dispositions of land. So a little bit of an update there. Dan, you also sit on the LPC, but if people have questions on any laws or LDs in front of us, thank you for the update you gave on yours tonight as a resident. And we're watching all of those, but there, there, there's a lot there. So if you have specifics, just let me know. The mini grant, I thought I'd update that there's been two issued this year for a total of 750 each, total of 1,500. One was pickleball at Orno High School and the other was Jasmine. Oh, I don't, I don't want to get the last name wrong, I can't read my own last name. But again, it was for a cultural event. So again, both of those were currently sponsored, you have 6,000 remaining. We will do something in the Observer for the next one out that there are funding. We added it to the website and as well as our billboard to let people know that there's mini grants out there. But this may be a future council discussion on other ideas before the end of fiscal year. I'll leave that to you.
The residents of Orno, don't come forward with ideas, I'm sure we'll have a couple.
You are residents, they'll have to.
Well, we are, but yeah.
Can someone, I was, I'm aware I was out of town, but Matt, what was the Jasmine event in the fall?
It was Brazilian?
It was a Brazilian, like a cultural affair where they had both musicians and food and different, and capoeira and some other things that they, they had. And I was not able to attend, but everyone who did said it was fabulous. And I think that there are plans in the work for something even bigger going into the future. And so we want to support them as much as we can, so.
Wonderful, thanks for the update.
Next one, the council meetings are currently on Facebook Live. Our community engagement director has great experience with using them through YouTube and wanted to broadcast them in that fashion. There will be some changes, we want to publish and put out. But if it's agreeable, that would be on the first meeting on the 24th of February, we'd make that transition. Currently, our archive is all through YouTube, so it's a little bit more, it's more seamless to do it this way. But it does change how people would engage with not having that Facebook Live. They've got to have another way to, they'll have to use the YouTube Live to log in. But we will put up all the instructions and have it on our Facebook page. Click here to view the meetings and to participate. So it's not dumping Facebook, it's just not broadcasting through there. The ordinance review committee, yeah, I'm waiting to see what the new time is. I just wanted to kind of put that out there, but we did cancel next week's meeting or this week's meeting, I think it is. We received notice that Route Two will be being paved from Bangor to the Kelly Road. And you will be seeing an agenda item, probably consent calendar next week to waive our road posting weight limits on the Kelly Road coming in. I don't know if they'll be starting that early, but they did request that. So that will be put forward to you in a packet. The revenue sharing, so a serious update. We found out late last week, the initial projected revenue sharing numbers. Now, last year, remember, it came in, they went up about, I think it was 46,000 from the projection to the final. Right now, and again, we're seeing this with where our budgets went up, our value went up. And we did not have a change in population. We are seeing a slight decrease, about 225,000. So that is something we'll be working on in the budget for this year. As a side, unrelated to the town budget, but the school received their ED 279 and they were up over 650,000. So there's additional revenues coming to Orno from the state of Maine. It's just in different places at this point, so we will be working with you. And again, our value to population affects the ED 279, so it's, it's a never-ending game of how much you want to grow and how fast. But thought I'd share both those out with you, with those getting more in the budget process. I want to thank Councillor Larway for thanking the Public Works Department. I was intending to share something similar, especially as we might have a busy week of snowfall ahead of us. So pay attention as we come into Thursday and Sunday, some snow ahead. And then last one, I just want to give a shout out to Zach and Mitch on 2/24 is a council meeting and a finance committee meeting. And both of them will be flying solo and planning those and Mitch will be in my role for that meeting. I'm looking forward to that, but I will not even be zooming. I debated it and I said, no, it's one meeting, one agenda, so you guys have fun with them on the 24th.
Good for you.
Yeah.
So those people are. So those people who are looking for you will know that you, you're taking personal time.
Yes.
So that's great. I'm glad that's, we'll keep the ship of state afloat until you get back. We'll have some fun with Mitch, too. I'll think of something. Not Zach, though. We're going to take it easy on Zach. Yep. All right. Thank you. Thank you for that report. Any questions for the town manager? We do not have any public petitions. Item 14, future agenda items and council requests for supporting items. Are there any items here?
Yes, I don't know if the request I brought up earlier makes sense in this part or whether it's just as simple as making note that I want that to be a, a part of our budget discussions. But I, I think I would like to hear, maybe once this winter is over, the experience of public works as far as snow removal and what it's been like with the current staffing levels. Cause we did say that we would revisit it and see what the results had been.
Okay. And anything else from anybody on future agenda items or items of concern? Okay, this is our final shot at public comment. Would anybody like to share anything with us? All set?